Seven o'clock. So I will call to order the January 4th, 2021 meeting of the Lansing City Council. Sheri, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Hussein.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
Sorry, Councilmember Garza, President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President, participating remotely from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spitzley.
President, participating from Lansing, Michigan.
She was very faint. Did you get that, Chris?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
I'm present and remotely from Lansing, Michigan. I stopped and think what I was doing.
President from remotely in Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Eight members present. You have a quorum of council.
Thank you. Okay, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance. Is there anyone that folks need to be remembered? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm requesting that we take a brief moment to remember and pray for Ms. Sheri Davy, who passed away last week. And if you've been around and in and around the legislature for the past 20-plus years, and you've seen Sheri and our friends with her, she was the executive director of the Michigan Legislative Black Caucus for more than 13 years and was active in Michigan politics, both here in Detroit. Most importantly, I wanted you to know she was a woman of strong, abiding, and knowledgeable faith, attending both the Wyoming Church of Christ in Detroit and the Holmes Road Church of Christ here in Lansing. Sheri didn't suffer fools, but she would give you the shirt off her back and served her family, friends, her church, and the people of Lansing with devotion, love, and wisdom. So she was my sister in Christ at Holmes Road Church of Christ and a longtime close friend to my family. So our hearts are heavy with her loss, and I'd like to extend my deepest sympathies to her family. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I too mourn Sheri. I knew her from when I worked in the legislature. And more recently, she's been one of our election workers for the past several years, and she'll be greatly missed. Thank you for that. Anyone else we need to remember during the moment of meditation? Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you. Just one that is all around us that we don't necessarily give a lot of shout-outs to, but it's all of the families and people that's affected from the coronavirus. Every day is nearly a new record in deaths, and it's the worst time of the pandemic yet. I think for everybody, the circles are closing in on all of us as far as who we know, whose families are sick, and even unfortunately, who's passed away. And just keep everybody in your prayers and those family members. And hopefully, people are taking it serious and that this is to turn around with the vaccines and everything, because 3,000 and 4,000 deaths a day is staggering. And I think that needs to be brought into perspective.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's observe a moment of meditation. Thank you. All right. Now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are to our main item of business tonight now, which is the election of city council president and vice president for the year 2021. We have a resolution that was reported from the committee of the whole, and I will recognize Councilmember Wood, who made the nomination in the committee, to make the motion here on the floor of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Swol. I would move the resolution nominating Peter Spatafor as president of council and Adam Hussein as vice president of council.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved to approve the slate of officers of the council. Is there any discussion? Okay, seen none. I will call the roll on the resolution. Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays. The resolution is adopted. Congratulations, President Spatafor and Vice President Hussein. And President Spatafor, here is the get.
Mr. Clerk, you are relieved. Thank you very much.
I am relieved.
We're gonna make you president one of these days.
You guys tried that once. And with that, unless you want to make an acceptance speech, we are to the approval.
I will save my acceptance speech for comment council, but I will ask for a motion on the council proceedings.
President Spatafor, I would move the printed council proceedings from October 26th, the 9th of November, November 30th, December 7th, as well as December 14th.
Thank you. The proper motion is before us. Is there any discussion on the proceedings? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Really, Peter? We just started. Yes, yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Eight yeas, zero nays. The remaining proceedings from the prior year are approved.
Happy to put that year behind us.
Yes. Yeah, a couple more bows to pull on it, and it will be over. We, I'm not aware of any late items, so I believe we are to comments by council members and the city clerk.
Yes. Are there any council members who wish to make comments? Mr. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I would like to make a public apology. Today was brought to my attention that I was excessively absent from last year's Ways and Means Committee meetings. At first, I was surprised about this because I didn't recall being on that committee. But then, after I looked, the attendance records reflect that I attended January's meeting, was excused for February's meeting, and then there was three months where there were no meetings because of the pandemic. And during that time, I basically forgot that I was on the committee and missed the subsequent eight meetings that were held virtually. Committee work is very important, and I'm embarrassed that I unknowingly forgot and missed so many meetings. Fortunately, city business was not delayed, as the other committee members were able to pass business and move it in my absence. I apologize to everyone, especially my constituents, that I was not there, and I can assure you all that this will not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson, very much for that. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. At our ending meeting in December, there, we had a great deal of discussion and a number of city of Lansing retirees that came before us. And one of the things that was discussed was putting dollars back into the retiree healthcare fund. Council, as well as the other elected officials, receive a raise on January 1st for this next fiscal year. I have decided, I know there are some council members that have already agreed to have 10% of their salaries given back to the city. I have decided not only to take the 10%, but the subsequent raise that we would be getting this year, that starts January 1st, and asked that that be added to the 10%, and that those dollars be put in the retiree healthcare fund. And so I just believe that we need to lead by example. We've talked about the fact that we're in difficult budget times, and we haven't been able to fund things. I realize that this is, you know, some might think is miniscule to what we need, but it's just like when you start a bank account, you put a dollar in it, it continues to grow as others do. So I wanted to make that announcement this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Is there any councils for council? Okay, well, I'll just, if I could take a point of privilege for a moment, thank you all for your support for another term in this chair. We talked about this at committee of the whole. The consistency and the year has just not been any, any one, any of us anticipated when we, when I made this speech last year in January. But it has been a learning experience. I think that together, we have been a, one of the best performing public bodies in the state in terms of making virtual meetings work. We have improved, to a great extent, the amount of public participation in our meetings, sometimes to the, you know, great detriment of my back. But I think that, that input is very important, and I don't mean to make light of it. For those of you on the phone, I appreciate you showing up for public comment. But it has been a very challenging and very good year, I think, for this council in terms of figuring things out. So I appreciate the faith in, in your support for another year. I appreciate Vice President Hussein's willingness to put up with me for another 12 months. You know, this has been a learning experience for all of us. And I really want to thank you all for your support. And thank Sheri for everything she's done to help make this year, last year run, the way it did. Our IT department and each of you for your particular role in making this year. While we still have challenges, I think this body worked very well together in very different and unique circumstances. So thank you very much. I will stop speaking because this is a very short agenda, and I don't want to make it any longer than I have to. So I'll call on Vice President Hussein now.
Yeah, and I'll be incredibly quick. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, President Spatafor, for all you did last year to truly, I mean, the work again, and I talked about this as part of committee of the whole process, but the work done behind the curtain to make sure that all the work, the good work that you just referenced, you know, to ensure that, you know, that work was able to be accomplished. You know, again, the work was, behind the curtain was robust, and you certainly led the way, and we appreciate that. I too wanted to give, you know, a shout-out of sorts, really, to our office manager Sheri Bulke. I often call her kind of the wizard behind the curtain. She's, and she's incredible. The work that she does to ensure that the city's business continues to move forward, it is incredible what one person is able to do out of that position. Also, to Renee Freeman, who is our administrative specialist, she came on during just an incredibly difficult time. As a matter of fact, we had to interview her through Zoom last year. But she came in, she really found her sea legs quickly, and she has just done an incredible job for our, for our body as well, to ensure that our work is able to be done. IT was tremendous last year. You did a great job, President Spatafor, collaborating with them, but IT was just incredible, particularly Jason and Dominic. And then, you know, to the OCA, Jim, we really appreciate you and your office. You guys did a fantastic job staffing our committees, making sure that we were making decisions with all of the legal, right, advice that we needed at our disposal. We had that. We were prepared. We appreciate that. And then to the administration, we appreciate you as well. A number of your staff members, obviously, were in on a number of our committee meetings. The information was pretty transparent at time. Well, quite a bit of the information was very transparent forthcoming last year. It made our job easier. So I just wanted to thank everybody for what they did last year to kind of pull together and ensure that the work continued, because I agree with President Spatafor. I think the work that was done in the city of Lansing, I, you know, I put that up against, you know, the work that was done in any municipality across the state last year. So I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you, Vice President Hussein. Yes, and I'm sorry, Ms. Richmond, for leaving you off that list of thanks. I very much appreciate the work you've done for us as well.
And just, just very quickly, please tell me I didn't say Richmond. Did I say, or did I say Freeman?
I was gonna, I tried to slide it in there.
It's, okay. So last year, you guys forgave me, and I appreciate that. This year, that's on me. I apologize. Renee Richmond.
I've never, I've only known one Renee in my life, and now I know two. So there we go. They're, they're, they all work for the city. So.
And that just rolls off the tongue, doesn't it?
Any job openings in the city, if your name's Renee, you've got a leg up. So just, there you go. That probably concludes us screwing up everyone's names. So we're going to go over to the city clerk. Mr. Clerk, do you have any comments for the good of the whole?
I do not have any comments, so I will go ahead and move us along on the agenda. We are to community event announcements. If anyone in the listening audience has a community event, we will give you up one minute to tell us the time and place, purpose of your event. Please raise your hand using the functions on Zoom, star nine on a phone, the raise hand icon, or alt Y on Windows, or option Y on an Apple. And I see no hands. Okay, so we will move on. We are to registration for public comment on legislative matters. And tonight legislative matters, of course, is only the election of the council president and vice president that has already occurred, but you still can comment on it on legislative matters. And while you're raising your hands, we will move on to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. Clerk. Congratulations, Mr. President. Congratulations, Mr. Vice President. Excited to work with, with you both and the whole council. Happy New Year to everyone. I hope you all had a great holiday season. I don't have much to share. I do want to share, though, I know we made a big announcement at the end of the year about the retiree healthcare agreement that we came to with the unions. I'm excited that we got a win-win, able to save some money and, and work out the issues that we had with our retirees. I do want you as council members to know that should you hear from retirees, anybody who's pre-65 and retired, they should still have everything exactly the same. Anybody who is post-65, they move to Humana, but they retain all of their, their co-pays and deductibles that they had previously had. Now, for the first two months, there could be some hiccups. So if anybody gets charged more than they should, they will be reimbursed. And they're getting information sent to them about this. There's a letter that's going to go out. There's going to be webinars and conference calls and things like that to make sure that everybody knows how to get repaid if they get charged more. There's a variety of options. They'll all get letters in the mail, and if they get questions, there are phone numbers that they can call if there are any questions. So those who are post-65 can call Amwins at 866-286-5154. And then if any retirees have questions that are pre-65, they can call Health Advocate at 866-695-8622. It's, all this information's been provided to the retirees in a variety of ways. But we can send that to you all as council members as well, should you get any questions from any of the retirees. In addition, Mark Lawrence and my staff has that in my office, and Judy Keeler, our chief strategy officer, has that information. So I wanted to make sure everyone knows that, that we'll be providing that information and that there shouldn't be any change. In fact, due to the change in Humana, there could be some, some more benefit to our retirees. So it's kind of a win-win-win. It's going to save the city money. It's going to retain the co-pays and deductibles and things, and they actually get, could get a few additional benefits. So a good result at the end, before Christmas, at the end of last year. So that being said, oh, the only other thing I had, you got an email today from Chief Darrell Green. One of the things we strive to do is let you know when we're going to be applying for grants. And LPD will be applying for a grant on behalf of CARE, the Capital Area Response Effort. LPD is a fiduciary for the Victims of Crime Act grant. So we didn't have time to get it to you all for, to make the agenda, but you all got an email today from the police chief. I think their deadline is Thursday, and they are planning to apply. So if anybody has any questions, I know you all like to see this stuff early, in case you have any questions before application. So wanted to make sure that, that the chief got that to you. So you should have that in your email inbox. And again, look forward to the year working with you all. Thank you all for your service. And congratulations to our, our new and current president and vice president. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and so far, I do not see any hands up. So apparently, no one wants to speak on that. So I guess we will move on to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. So if you just want to speak on anything related to the governance or operation of the city, please go ahead and begin raising your hand. We will cut off the hand raising once the first speaker has finished speaking. In the meantime, while you are raising your hands, we will go to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
I'm sorry, I was catching up on the agenda here. It's, I'm not used to moving this quickly through it. Excuse me.
Me too.
I apologize, everybody. All that stuff about your faith in me has been misplaced, apparently. Mr. Vice President, we need a motion.
Sure. I would move that items be considered as read and full, and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
Thank you. I see, I do see some discussion. Councilmember Spitzley, to sound the referrals.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Who was she for?
I have, I'm pleased that both of you have decided to take on the task again for this year. I am requesting that the affidavit of disclosure for Samantha Harkins' Office of the Mayor be separated out and discussed separately from, or at least be referred jointly to the Ethics Board, as it's appeared to be referred to, and Committee of the Whole.
I think you can do that when we get to the item. That's what's been done in the past. At this point, we usually approve the motion, so I don't know if we need a separate vote on the motion.
And that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that it was upfront. So if I approve the motion to have it all read and read into the, to the record, then I'm not missing my opportunity for, to discuss it.
Yeah.
Either way.
I'm, I don't necessarily have a problem with what you've asked, but it seems to sidestep the entire ethics disclosure process to do this through Committee of the Whole on a case-by-case basis.
And I, and I would agree with you, President Spatafor. I think that, for me, the issue is not whether or not the mayor has the authority to enter into a contract or whatever, because he does. And that, that's been, you know, we've had a city attorney, a decision or opinion on that, when we had the Benaro administration, and when council wanted to hire an outside investigator. So we, you know, that, that's not the issue. But I do think that it is important for us to have, I think, a more robust understanding of what the role is. It is my understanding that it is a part-time contract position, and that it is $52 an hour. But, you know, I believe, and I just want to know, and I, again, I'm not questioning whether the mayor has the authority to do so and enter into this contract, because I do believe he does. But I think it's important for us to kind of have an understanding of what exactly the special projects that are going to be done as part of the contract. And, you know, so that we, we can, as council, I mean, at the end of the day, we do have to make a recommendation on budget and payments as well. And I think it's important for us to have more information.
Okay, well, this is her ethics disclosure, not her contract. So I'm gonna, unless the council wants to vote on that referral, I'm, I don't think we're going to take it up on Committee of the Whole until the Ethics Board has reviewed it. I'm sorry, we didn't, I didn't have, you didn't have a chance to give me to discuss this, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood, and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Spitzley.
That's fine.
So I understand, President Spatafor, that what you're saying, and maybe I'm incorrect, that the Ethics Board would take this up and make a decision, but then Committee of the Whole could also look at it. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I would like to not sidestep the ethics process for one individual. We've got one here from the city attorney as well, sitting right next to this one. And I don't want to start this precedent. If the Ethics Board finds an issue, that's a different thing. And then if we want to talk about it during the budgeting process, that's a separate issue as well. But I think that we're opening up a can of worms on these ethics disclosures for which there's a very specified process in ethics disclosure, and we are supposed to be absent from that intentionally.
And I don't disagree with what you're saying, President Spatafor. I really don't. I, I believe in the ethics, I believe in that process. I think it is, it is a valuable process. How I think this is different is that we have a member of our administration who has left and who has now been contracted back again, for whatever reason, but also has a, a private business doing consulting, economic development, you know, whatever it is. I don't think that, I think that this is uncharted territory. I don't believe that we've ever had a situation where a member of our administration has left and then been contracted back. And, and clearly, the affidavit of disclosure says that there may be a conflict. I don't care that it goes to the Ethics Board. My issue with that is, once the Ethics Board makes a decision, is that decision?
Councilmember Spitzley, you said, you, you, I'm sorry, you broke up. You said, "Once the Ethics Board makes a decision," and then that was the end of what we heard from you, at least what I heard.
I'm sorry. I'm on, I'm on, I'm on bootleg headphones tonight. But I think that, you know, is it, once the Ethics Board makes a decision, is there room for council to have a deliberation at that point? I don't want to have the Ethics Board make a decision, and then whatever concerns we have, then are moot.
Well, it would be my unprofessional opinion that the Ethics Board needs to make its decision before we start having a discussion on whether there's a conflict of interest, because that's what the Ethics Board exists for. Whether it's, you know, a council member who is part of a organization that receives a grant from the city, that's determined by the ethics disclosure forms. All of these will be determined by the ethics disclosure form. I think it's prudent to have that process play out and not step into that until they make their decision. Whether they just determine a conflict or not, the council can pursue a different line of questioning later, but I don't want to further this to Committee of the Whole. That is not our role in this process.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Vice President Hussein.
Thank you. Okay, um, I think that's it. Mr. Clerk, we need a roll call on the motion to refer the items on referral, please.
On the motion for referrals, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
No.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
I can't hear you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Sorry, I'm hitting my spacebar like you told me, but it wasn't working. So.
Hold it.
Okay.
Seven yeas, one nay, the motion is adopted. So we have minutes of boards and commissions placed on, filed on the clerk's office.
Placed that on file here as well.
And Executive Director of 2020-03, the commitment to fair and bias-free treatment of all people.
Yes, we'll place that on file, but also please refer that to the Committee on Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion.
Letters from the mayor, the appointment of DeLisa Fountain as the Director of Department of Neighborhood and Citizens Engagement, and Recommendation of Eligibility Waiver.
The Committee of the Whole.
Communications and Petitions, an affidavit of disclosure from Samantha Harkins, Office of the Mayor.
The Ethics Board.
Affidavit of Disclosure, James Smear, Calade Department.
The Ethics Board.
Communication from Cassandra Bowman on multiple city issues.
Place that on file, please, with the council.
Communication from Julie Kramer on multiple city issues.
Same place on file.
Communication from Daniel, Daniel Hoffman regarding the. Communication from Daniel, Daniel Hoffman regarding the death of Anthony Hulan.
Please place that on file.
And communication from the Michigan Electric Control Commission regarding a new SDM license at 212 South Washington Square.
The Committee on General Services.
We are to remarks by council members.
I just have one. We've been saying IT all night, but I also want to throw a big thanks out to City TV. They have done a huge amount of legwork in preparation for in-person meetings, not in-person meetings, all preparation to come back, all that type of stuff. So to that team, I say thank you as well. We didn't mean to exclude you. We, we lump all the computery stuff in with one department, but what we really meant was City TV and IT. So thank you all for your work on that.
Okay. Anything, we are to, I'm sorry, remarks by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, anything to add?
Yeah, just one I want to clarify. Samantha Harkins never left the city. She is our deputy mayor. She has decided to, to change to a part-time role. So just so folks know, she's no longer receiving benefits. She has stepped back to a part-time role in my office. We do have many employees throughout the city that have second jobs and that's nothing, nothing unusual. So just want to correct that she did not leave and come back. I know it was reported that way in the city polls and that was inaccurate. She is a, an employee of the city and is now a part-time employee. So just to make sure that the, the record is cleared on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing I need to do officially, folks, we have been in the process for approximately 100 years to hire a new internal auditor. And we had interviews before we went on break and needed to finish those up this year, but the committee expired. So while I'm going to ask each of you after this meeting to share with me your committee preferences and then council, Vice President and I will work together to, to, to build committees from that, those, those preferences. We do need to establish the Committee on Personnel to have those interviews this week. So formally, I will read into the record that the Committee on Personnel will be chaired by Vice President Hussein with myself as the Vice President, Councilmember Wood as the at-large member and Councilmember Garza as the ward representative on that committee. That is the exact committee that was here last year. And that we, we may end up changing that in, in another round of appointments, but we needed to have the same four people interview both candidates, all candidates. So I'll read that formally into the record here. Mr. Clerk, does that satisfy your, your needs?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters.
Before we do that, Mr. Clerk, Councilmember Wood has her hand up.
President Spatafor, could you announce the parks meeting? If you would announce that so that we can get that out there a couple times before that meeting.
Yes, we are meeting at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 20th, as a committee of the whole. Again, this will be a quick presentation from the Parks Department on the Parks Master Plan. And then that'll give the public one more opportunity to weigh in. I know that they did a tremendous amount of electronic input and things like that, but we'll give them one more, the public one more chance to review that, because sometimes folks tune in once it's on our agenda. So I'd like, we'd like to give you one more opportunity to, to hear that presentation and provide public comment before we have to approve whatever final product looks like on before the first of February. So.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk. Now the floor is yours.
Okay, we are to public comment and the first speaker is the Honorable Judge Cynthia Ward, followed by Propagandhi.
Good evening, council. Am I, can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I'm Cynthia Ward, District Court Judge. First, please let me extend my congratulations to Council President Spatafor and Council Vice President Hussein. I come before council tonight because I wanted to make sure that each of you was aware, as well as those who may be viewing, that the CDC, the Centers for Disease Control eviction moratorium has been extended until January 31st, 2021, for those who qualify. So those are actions for non-payment of rent. So for our viewers who may be eligible, to find out if they are eligible for the moratorium, they should visit Michigan Legal Help at www.michiganlegalhelp.org. And also, if they do qualify for the protection, each tenant, each resident who's named in the lease will have to submit a declaration document to the landlord. So there is an affirmative step that has to be taken by the tenant. All of that information is on the district court's website. We have a video that provides information about resources that may be available. But I just wanted to make sure council was aware that that CDC eviction moratorium has been extended until January 31st, 2021. And if it's extended beyond that, I'll see you again next month. Thank you.
Chris, you're muted.
Thank you. All right. Again, that closes the ability for people to raise their hands. So we have Propagandhi followed by Daniel.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Couple things. Happy New Year to you all, first of all. As everybody has expressly stated, I can't wait to work with y'all for another year as well. First meeting of the year. I think it's important that we mention a couple of things that have gone on over the last two weeks or so. Looks like Propagandhi has backed off of some of these very you know, astronomical, ridiculous things that he's done to the people. Woody, you know, went after the retiree healthcare, backed off of that. I'm not speaking to the council so much as I am speaking to the people listening here. We cannot forget and we cannot act like what happened didn't happen and all the pressure and all the time of you all being on here to speak on the retirees' behalf, on Anthony Hulan's family's behalf, is the reason why we're getting movement on these things. The fact that I came out as a fireman and expressed that I was dealing with discrimination and racism is the only reason why we have a alliance on racial equity and inclusion. This, the seven people that are suing the city of Lansing are the reason why we have these things. And so it's good to move forward and I'm off to that. I don't ever want anybody to think that Mike Lynn is on here saying Andy can't get right or can't do right. Things that he's trying to do, maybe they're good, maybe they're not. We'll see when some actual brass tacks hits the floor. But what I do have a problem with is the fact that we continue to move on and we're forgetting about the people that have been hurt. Me, all of the other people that are suing the city, how can we move on in racial equity and, and, and fix these issues if we're not dealing with or even acting on the people who have already been hurt? So the retirees, all the people who have been hurt in that situation, can't just keep putting out press releases and then figure that the people that have been shamed and been sat in their basements and, and worrying about their financial situation or their health, it's okay to just move on now because we put a press release out. And so again, I'm not speaking to the council or the mayor in this aspect. I'm speaking to the people. Remember that. Obviously, Propagandhi is not going to resign. He's going to stick this thing out and try to clear his name up however he can. But don't forget about the people who are hurt. I'm one of those people that have hurt. I've advocated for every single person, every single issue that's came to city council, I was in the forefront pioneering it. I pressed, I pressed. It's the reason why we are where we are in these issues, because I pressed, because the people supporting me pressed. So let's not forget about that after the next press release comes out and he's changed something else and forgot about the people that he's killed, lied about killing, the people who may end up killing themselves because of the situation he's put them in. We cannot forget about that. And all niceties aside, you guys, I appreciate the work that you do, but this year will be reckoning. People will be coming for answers. People will ask and answer, or need answers to these situations. So let's not forget about what he's done already to this point. You got to make the people whole before you can move forward in reconciliation. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our final speaker tonight is Daniel.
Hi, this is Daniel Arnold. Today I'll be sharing a portion of Dr. Proust's speech, "The Most Important Profession." Why is law enforcement the most important profession in the United States? Ask yourself this question. What happens if a large group of police officers don't report for duty? History has answered that for us. In 1919, the Boston Police Strike lasted only one day. The city of Boston was plunged into civil chaos. President Wilson branded the walkout a crime against civilization. In 1969, Montreal Police went on strike and anarchy took place. During the first day, eight banks were robbed, 100 shops were looted, and there were sniper attacks and rioting resulting in $3 million of property damage. 35 years ago this month, Baltimore Police went on strike and the results were similar to what happened in Boston and Montreal. When law enforcement stops, civilized society stops. Other professions are of limited significance when civilized society stops. This is why I believe law enforcement is the most important profession in the United States. Police officers work for the people and will be entrusted with great responsibility. The Michigan State Police recognizes this and its statement is, "You must constantly stop to consider how your decisions will influence people." Those who protect are not perfect, but they come forth ready to make the ultimate sacrifice for our safety. Day in and day out, they serve the people to the best of their abilities. That is why I say thank you to all Lansing Police Officers. We celebrate Law Enforcement Appreciation Day on January 9th by thanking each amazing police officer for their service to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk and council. I just wanted to let you all know, we will meet next week. We're going to do 5:30 next week and then we're going to discuss about whether 5 o'clock is going to be our, our continued forward plan into the future. But for now, 5:30, there's not a ton to deal with, I don't believe. So that'll get us 5:30 tomorrow, next week rather. Oh, yeah, we have a lot of hearings on the 11th, but they're all at council, just not at council. 5:30 on the 11th. We'll see you all for Cal. Thank you very much, everybody, and have a great evening.